Start off with the pledge allegiance and.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, so on the agenda. We'll get right to, we have a public hearing, so we'll be opening a public hearing to discuss the matter of junkyards. I'll let the town manager kind of go from there and the code enforcement officer.
Well, my code enforcement officer go from there. We, I think we have, uh, is it? Eight, um, before you. I could be mistaken here.
I think there were eight on the agenda, six that have actually acted out of patients and. And so number two, I don't have an application for O L C. Correct, if I'm saying that correctly. And did not receive an application from Robert Door, obvious, and I'm not sure if that's because they abandoned that or. I did send out letters to, you know, initiate this and didn't receive any response from them too.
Okay, generally speaking, what is, don't recall, um. When there, when there's no response, what's the, uh? What's the protocol after that?
So we should probably send him a letter just saying that, you know, we, um.
Uh, and I discussed whether the the second public hearing would those applicants have to cover that fee for the public notice? Or do we absorb that? Cause we've already put it in once.
Right.
I just wanted to ask what their case was on.
Yeah, but I think this is something that we usually do every year. So I mean, I think if they can't follow through, then.
I would feel like that would be up to their, their obligation to pay for it. I mean, so that would be my, my feeling on that. I agree. I just wanted your direction.
All right. So generally speaking, then in the past, uh, we leave it up to you to as code enforcement officer, make your recommendations and then we go from there.
So being you, um, for the, being here, I have reached out to the ones that you do have applications. I've been on site. Um, from what I can gather, I haven't received any complaints about these applicants and the properties appear to be in the same state that they were. That reduced. Though I have to consider it.
So you're making a recommendation to re-license Stanley Garnett, uh, Robert Grace, Voight Rich, Dale Command, Bill Poole and, and James Cogly?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Has anybody from the room here have any comments or questions or concerns about permitting process this year, but?
Just a question about those that didn't apply. You know, did we give them a week of time before they? Come back, like you know, let them run for a year or, you know?
Do by the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
So we have a little time. We've got a couple more, two more select board meetings.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So their relations expire at the end of the year.
Right. So we got a little time.
At that point, if they haven't come back.
Let's say they're in violation.
I guess we'd start the compliance process.
I just don't see a care of those applicants informing, you know, to get a kind of lunch to somebody that isn't.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm prepared to support their recommendations on on our ordinances enforcing them.
I guess from my perspective, the, um, the other previous code officer, um, things had been sent out to them, you know, in different timing than this year. I kind of came in when things should have already been out, so. Um, I'm not trying to make excuses for the applicants, but I'm also just pointing out that things may have been presented differently.
That's a fair point. How would you like to handle that other than sending out a note?
I mean, the notice is upon the applicant to apply. It's their license. Um, and so, um, fortunately, here it is November thirtieth. Um, we still have two more select board meetings, so we'll reach out to the other applicants or the potential applicants here and, um, and ask them to submit. And we're happy to schedule another public hearing for those, those two applicants.
Okay. If anybody doesn't have any further, the comments and I'll close the public hearing. Motion for those public hearing.
Please go.
All right, second, all those in favor? All right, so we'll have a motion to, uh, to, uh, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the code enforcement officer to approve Stanley Garnett, Robert Priest, Voight Rich, Dale Command, Bill Pullen and James Cogly for a new license. All right, all those in favor? All right, so now we have to sign, right?
Yep, I got them. Set these down.
Thank you, sir. I, while I, while you're here, um. I don't know if Aaron had, had talked to you at all. And if you're not prepared to answer this question, that's fine. Throughout the year, uh, people occasionally reach out to me with concerns about how the junkyard permit process is as far as what, what it entails. And, um, I wouldn't mind at some point, uh, your opinion on, on that ordinance specifically, since it's something that you kind of.
Yeah, um, Aaron had talked to me about that, but you're correct. I don't have really answered this time.
Understood, but I will, yeah. So, and do we send that notice out certified mail on the second attempt or is it by general mail?
What's that?
Do we send that notice out by general mail or does it go by certified mail?
Probably, yeah.
All right.
I'm gonna go.
Okay, so the next, uh, next step is we're gonna discuss opening transfer station engineering bids. Let's town manager kind of take the lead on that. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Jason. So, uh, a while back, we, um, uh, saw requests for proposals for um, preliminary engineering estimates for construction of a new transfer station, uh, the, um. I sent twenty-one emails directly to, uh, engineering, uh, groups here in Maine. And I've only received one back. And I mean, I, I sent them via email, which I was, you know, they received it. They acknowledged they received it. Um, so we do have, um, Sender's Science and Engineering and Construction did send in an RFP. Um, you have that before you, um, it talks about, um, mapping and base map creation. Um, uh, he'll be, he would propose using an unmanned aerial vehicle to create existing conditions in a base map for permitting and design, um, preliminary design and grant administration. Utilizing the survey rate base map preliminary designs will be created of the two building options with cost estimates of both provided for review. Um, utilizing preliminary designs and grant proposals will be drafted and submitted at the request of the town. Uh, and then finally, uh, there would be a final design and permitting. Once the preliminary plan is approved by the town, a construction grade plan set would be created on a selected design. The construction plan set will be used for permitting and bid solicitation as well as construction. Um, um, so he's proposed seventy-six hundred dollars, um, seventy-six hundred dollar cost to do that work. Um, so I'd open it up to the board for discussion and then, you know, uh, there's a task force meeting scheduled next week. Um, I'm sure the task force would be interested in discussing this as well, but that's, that's what we have on the table.
One star.
Dot stud. Dot stud.
I, I sort of agree, one is enough. I do, there's something wrong with the process of all those firms that they send it, what the stumbling block was, I think they get some feedback on. So busy, they can't take on any work for a couple of years. That kind of open-ended time period. What was the amount on that?
Seventy-six hundred.
George, do you have comment?
I have a lot to say.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a gentleman by the name of S- Sender's Science Engineering and Construction.
Uh, Camden? So I'll be, I mean, there's no conflict for me.
Camden.
It's a person I went to school with who is a PhD and a engineer out of Camden. Uh, just done town for, done work for Camden, participated in, uh, many, uh, projects over there. So, you know, he has good resume, but, uh, you know, some of my questions is, is, uh, you know, since we put out this request for a proposal, um, speaking with George, uh, he attended some recent D E P training and some, so I, I don't want to speak for George, but I guess my interpretation of how it explains to me is some, some changes and how the D E P would like us to consider doing some things may put a wrinkle in, in what we're asking for, so. I would, uh, I would recommend that we probably should have this conversation with the task force and then regroup next select board meeting, uh, to see what, what it is that we need to, to, uh, to do. Because this likely would change, change his pricing as well.
You're just about something like, um, state required engage the service.
So, um, yeah, probably should wait until the fourteenth to make a decision and then the transfer committee can meet on the seventh. And kind of discuss and then Rick can weigh in and then they will give, uh, Aaron some time to kind of reach out to some of these local firms that we put it out to and just kind of see if it was a process on our end. Or if it was a work issue or what are your thoughts on that, Aaron?
No, I agree, um. The, the language, um, was actually recommended by an engineer for the R F P, which is to solicit preliminary preliminary engineering estimates. Um, so, um, I feel pretty confident about that. I also think that we gave enough time. I mean, it was good four weeks, I believe. Um, so they've had enough time, so, uh, I don't know what, what went wrong there as far as not getting, um, a robust response. But I'm happy to make some phone calls.
It's not a budget situation. We have the money, do it. So like we wait until June to. Sure, right.
Did you, did you see this guy at your facility?
I didn't.
Or anyone else walking around with boards?
The first, I think the first engineer that we had done C E S and Alpott. C E S is very. Land transportation, Alpott design. I'm surprised.
Well.
I believe they're on the list too.
I'm used to the grab.
Sure. So we'll put that back on to the fourteenth.
Okay. Table.
Yep. And then, uh, that'll give Rick some time to, all right, so. Initially, this meeting was planned to have a workshop and then we added this public hearing, so, but, uh, Rick was not able to attend tonight, so, um, we've decided to postpone the brainstorming session to a later date. Um, but I will open it up to anybody that's here since we're here. Uh, if you have any comments or questions that you want to ask the board, all right. Should be painless tonight. Um. Yeah, one thing. So Aaron had requested that we, um, bring this up in a public session, so, um, the last couple of meetings, we've talked about, uh, the policy of having a discussion of uh, public comment and how that's going to, uh, as we move forward, uh, we potentially, you know, we'll potentially, we are moving forward with it with recording meetings, so, um, I'd like to ask the town manager have, um, prepare a policy recommendation for us for the next meeting. Uh, one of the things that our attorney has, uh, advised us that we have to do is any, any public comment policy has to have a public comment period. Um, so, um, we're gonna schedule that, that hearing for the first, uh, first meeting in January where we'll, we'll take action on the proposal and see what happens. Yeah, public comment. Is that the same as, uh, public comment is same as declaring a hearing?
Um, a public hearing is usually, um, designed to um, meet certain functions that, like for tonight, for example, a public, it's actually a public hearing. Public comment is, you know, I mean, you don't need to have a public hearing for for such a matter, I would say. Um, you're more than welcome to offer public comment for discussion. But, um, I don't think this is a mechanism that's required, a public hearing.
All right. So that's all I had. You had anything that you'd like to add?
Aaron. Uh, so we're looking at the first meeting in January to discuss the proposal?
Yeah.
Okay, a proposed public comment policy.
So if you draft one by the next meeting, then we can have time to review it and then another meeting can make any amendments and then.
Gotcha.
You have any comment?
Um, so, um, I did send you my thoughts on that, on, and, um, so I would encourage you to give me what your, your line of thinking is. Um, just to kind of give me an idea of where you'd like to go with this. Because I mean, there's, there's many models you can have out there, so I don't, I guess I'm kind of curious to hear. That's what I was hoping to do is kind of have some discussion about what the boards, um, you know, what their vision is for this policy. Rather than draft two or three different, you know, I, I don't know what direction you're, you're coming from, so I'm wondering if, um, I think I kind of got the ball rolling, um, and I'm wondering if that should involve discussion next and then, you know, and then I can tailor something for the January meeting. See what I'm saying?
So would you rather do the second?
Um, second meeting in January?
To have the hearing and then give us a couple of meetings to, to, to come to a discussion?
Well, you just, I mean, I, again, I don't think you need a public hearing on it. I think it's okay to solicit public comment.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, so would the second meeting in January be more, does that make more sense? Again, I'm just looking for some discussion with the board, an open session. And get some guidance as far as what you'd like to see in your policy.
I don't, I don't want to go any further past the second meeting in January. I, I don't want us to go into the budget, budget.
Yeah.
Worrying about this, so.
I mean, I think I could turn it around fairly quickly. Um, again, I've already kind of done the groundwork for this discussion. Uh, so perhaps the next meeting, we can have this discussion, you know, as far as what you're thinking as far as the direction we should be going in will be. And then on the twenty-eighth, I would expect to have a draft copy, um, for adoption, uh, in January.
Okay, so it's not, it doesn't have to be that formal, so we can just, just, we kind of outline.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the rough kind of structure where we're moving forward and then we get that done. Um, so, um, just on a, on a side note, and I know this is a hot topic for folks in town on, on this side anyways, um, just wanted to at least comment on it ahead of next meeting, um. So back in June, uh, we started the new year, we had folks show up, um, concerned about the sewer district and, um, you know, Aaron had started to work behind the scenes, uh, on our behalf to, uh, with the town of Winslow and a few other people as well as, uh, having, uh, discussions with the, uh, board. Um, I've been working with Representative Brad Street, uh, on a plan uh, for a while on to, uh, see what we can do to assist the folks, uh, on that stretch. Um, it's preliminary. Uh, I've been trying to get in contact with, uh, contacts I have, uh, through the D E P and, um, Representative Brad Street has been working with the governor's office to see about funding. Um, it's very preliminary right now and I don't know how it will pan out. Uh, but we will be, uh, I believe having a conversation on this topic the next meeting. Um, Representative Brad Street will be here and, uh, is Senator Puglia coming as well or no? But they aware.
I mean, I can surely invite him if that's your.
Um, and then, yeah, if you could see if he would come, that'd be great. Um, you know, so I think we'll be more to come the next meeting, I hope, um, and Representative Brad Street and I and, and Aaron. I believe we'll be having, uh, some meetings ahead of the meet, ahead of, have that as well, so. Um, I just want to at least touch base on that and at least know that even though it be, you know, that we are trying to do something, whether or not it falls through. You know, can't do anything about that.
And they got to be here on December sixth. They have a public meeting once.
I'm unaware of the.
So, um, it's my understanding that there's a group of citizens that are on the sanitary district that would like to have a meeting. Um, I don't believe it's a sanitary district meeting per se. Um, but I've, you know, I've opened up this room for them if they feel that they need a place to meet and discuss. Uh, you know, their concerns and, you know, options and things like that, kind of create an open forum.
So no, that could be here, no representatives.
They're more than hap, you know, they, they're more than welcome to attend. Um, I mean, it's an open meeting, but, uh, I, I was, we're limited to seventy-five people in this room. Uh, so, um, that would be my concern is that we meet the fire marshals, you know, um, standard, um. Yeah, cause I've heard people are pretty, pretty excited about getting together, so, um.
Interesting.
So, yeah, so, uh, yeah, anyway, that, um, so that's something I plan to be here for and, um, I'm happy to, you know, listen to people and give them a place to, to gather and talk about what's on their mind. And, uh, and then, uh, the, uh, sanitary district is, is aware that we'd like to have a discussion with them on the fourteenth to look at some measures that, you know, if any, if anything, and moving forward and, and trying to, to help assist. It starts with having conversations, I guess, so.
So, anything you'd like to add? Okay, so we'll, uh, go ahead and, um, review the warrants and then we'll re-sign this day.
Uh, so you got thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four. What's different? Um, the, you have two, uh, A Ps. One was to make up for a, um, excuse me, you have two A Ps and two payrolls. The reason why you have two payrolls is because there was a, uh, a correction that needed to be done on, uh, one payroll that was caught before the pay was issued. So it was kind of, Mike, Mike was uh, with his eagle eye was able to catch that for us, so, um, so anyway, we have to, we have to fix that.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four?
Correct.
You have any comments on that's about the payroll? Okay, let me, it's been fixed, all right. I make a motion to accept warrant, article thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three and thirty-four. All those in favor? All right. Was the fourth one?
Yeah, should be in the back.
The only thing is, uh, we got to get, uh, a little bit more serious about some of these ordinances that we wanted to prepare for June. We're getting, uh, we're getting kind of behind the eight ball here, so, um, we're definitely not going to be able to do anything with the marijuana stuff, uh, as far as the the licensing fees this year, but we need to have it prepared for June and I know Mike has, um, some thoughts he'd like to talk about on the TIF. You know, so we probably ought to start scheduling this out, so kind of timeframe, do you need to make, uh, your recommendations on the TIF ordinance?
Uh, that's something that I'm working with the town attorney on.
Okay.
Um, currently, and actually I'll be talking with them on Monday, I believe, um. Uh, there's also something else that may be coming up too, and that's L D, I believe, twenty-twenty-three. Um, not prepared to talk to you about it tonight, but, um, this is, has to do with accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
Um, and I believe Matt from K V cog had touched upon it, that the legislature, there's, there's monies that are out there. I think it's kind of like an unfunded mandate where all the municipalities, um, should be looking at incorporating that into their ordinances. And so, um, there's ten thousand dollars out there that the town can use to help, um, kind of navigate through that and I, again, I'm not entirely prepared to talk about that tonight, but I expect for us to have this discussion December fourteenth. Um, to, uh, uh, May Municipal Association today, um, as a matter of fact, came out with, um, some, some guidance for the municipalities. My understanding is, is that ours would want to have this in place in July of twenty-twenty-four. Um, so I can, um, send, Doug, I'll send you the info on it, um.
So we, we asking the planning board to make an ordinance adjustment?
Well, I, I, I think, again, I, there, there's monies that's out there to engage with someone to provide you that guidance, um. So I, I would imagine it involves discussion with the planning board, um. Um, but, um.
Uh, when, when you kind of heard about this two months ago. We, we had a very brief discussion about it, but we were thinking that other than the building. I mean, we have no really zoning.
Right.
Down. And, you know, it's a minimum lot size based on plumbing, basically, for a site, you know, amount of land needed for a septic system. Well.
I think that was a Senator Puglia bill, I, I forgot if he came last time. He talked about that when he was here.
I think it's worth hearing whatever may might have to say, you know, whatever Aaron. We're gonna have to do something. We need to get out.
Right.
Because we don't have any real housing restrictions.
We have setbacks though.
We have setbacks.
And I, I haven't read the statute, so I don't want to comment on it, but. Uh, if we're gonna do something though, we, we have to have it buttoned up in a couple of months.
And I don't know which ordinance it's all.
So we got.
Unless you create something entirely new, I'm not sure.
We got potentially three ordinances moving forward from the select board to the June vote. Um, I would prefer the planning board take this on if they have the capacity to do so with, with Aaron if that's she has something we need to reach out to Ginny about, see if she's willing to take it on his chair.
I didn't think you were having a meeting this, this month.
December.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything on the agenda. Okay, that's, that was my impression. January would be the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but, um.
Thought there was one of the previous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what do you stop from it? Uh, one revision and go ask the neighbors.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I don't know if it'd be misinformed.
And Jason, I've heard from them that they're coming back, that he was gonna reach out.
Let me, I'll ask him about that and verify.
That was planning what issue and waivers.
Did you talk to attorney about that?
About L D, you know, twenty-three?
What Doug just commented about, about the, that loophole that's in the waiver.
Yes.
Section that you sent the attorney.
Yes.
He didn't seem very upset. I'm sorry about it, I don't think.
No, right.
But anyway, the applicant always coming back, we're gonna reach out to the property, body of property owners. The applicant, see if they want to apply for. But if they haven't gotten.
All right. That's the neighbor to the, where the project's happening?
Well, the, the, uh, representative from solar company is going to check with the abutters and the property owner to see if they wanted, if the abutters had an issue to pay the waiver. Or the property owner wanted to apply. They don't have to put this project.
Right.
That was revision.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I'll follow up with Jason tomorrow about that.
So just so I can kind of keep a timeline on myself as well, uh, when do you think the attorney and you will be, uh, prepared to, um, bring a recommendation?
On TIF?
Yes.
I mean, it's, we have the legislation, we have our ordinance. I can't imagine it's gonna take a tremendous amount of time to kind of meld the two, I guess. Um, I, again, I mean, I, I just, they just responded to me today. Um, so I, I, I would say before the end of the year, should probably.
We're expanding the list of approved uses.
On the TIF, right? Cause there was legislation, right? Yeah, the leg, the legis, the legislation opens up what you can do with your TIF monies. So, um.
Yeah, but.
With economic development and using that towards your buildings is my understanding. So, um, we just want to get that in, that language in there, so we have it as a roadmap to follow in the future.
I think it's a good time though. I mean, I know this has been hot button to you, so, I mean, if, I would encourage you to submit your recommendations too and then if we can have a open meeting before we have a public, public hearing on it.
Open one. It's number seven.
Okay, um, the other thing that, uh, I think we need to button up before the end of the year is the personnel policy so that we can move on with, uh, other, uh, other things that the personnel policy is holding up. With the other uh other things that the personnel policy is holding up. I know that we are gonna. Finish um with language on uh volunteers and stuff uh in there. And there was another topic that we were going to address, you call it, that was off the top of your head. If you don't, that's fine. I just.
I mean, there's things like um. Oh, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of caught off guard.
That's fine, I apologize that we.
There's probably, I think there's three, three or four other, maybe three others.
Is that something that we could uh? Be prepared to vote on um? By the second meeting in December?
It's possibility, sure.
Alright. I don't mind doing the drafting and uh of that.
Okay, that'd be helpful. I can talk to you about that, okay, K V cog.
We can, if you'd like.
Well, so. I I wa- I wanted to wait to talk to you about this, but seeing how you brought it up, I mean, if if the state can give us ten thousand, and do you remember what K V cog was? Was like a six? So if they're, if if we get the ten, then maybe we can get the six, have them help us navigate through. The L D twenty twenty three with the accessory dwellings. And that covers the cost of.
The cop line is huge.
Right, no, I'm just. Right.
You roadmap for future grant applications.
Yeah, but we don't have zoning, and that was why we did do the cop plan last time. We did a strategic plan and it was six. Well, they they're different. I I think I think the cop plan um. Does what you what what you suggested, that it makes us a little bit more appealing for grants as opposed to our strategic plan does not. But what I understand from talking to different people in town, that that was part of the obstacles to. Not having the cop plane go through was because of the zoning. Do you have, do you have any insight on that? I mean, you've been on the planning board. This is almost as long as I've been alive.
Sometimes we have difference.
Fair enough. I I'm a, I'm a proponent of the pop plan. Whether or not the town will vote for it and, you know, and putting the resources and the money that it's gonna cost to develop one. And I mean, it's a couple of year project. I don't know if it will fly or not, and as far as K V cog's concerned, um. You know, I, for me, I I lay it that at at uh, you know, putting that in the budget. And letting the people vote whether or not they want us to pay that fund annually, and the select board. Made a decision seven, eight years ago that it wasn't worth it, and you weren't getting a return and. I'm indifferent. At this point. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Robbie or Bill Brown yet either, so. I get their two cents in, sir. Alright, so if less than anybody else has anything else they want to bring up, then uh the town manager had mentioned that uh he has a personnel. Situation he wants to discuss that would require us to go into executive session. Um and that will con- conclude our night. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight.